Okay, Verizon time says it's noon, so I'm going to call this work session to order. If you have your cell phones on you, please turn it to mute or turn it off. As with any work session, we'll take questions from the council. Public is welcome to attend, but there will be no questions from the public. So, Mr. Murphy, it's all yours.
Thanks, Dr. Rennie. Thank you all for being here today. The purpose of this work session and kind of what I wanted to have it is I know there's been a lot of interest in the communications and engagement the city does. And I just kind of wanted to have an opportunity to go over some of the work that we're doing in that space, some initiatives and projects that we're doing, and then give an opportunity to ask questions, too. So, this isn't comprehensive. We're kind of focused on just the larger citywide projects and initiatives, but there's work that city staff does every day with the public. I mean, our 1% team's out meeting with residents and businesses before construction, sanitations and communication with our residents every day, just, you know, there's tons and tons of examples. So, we're just going to kind of go over the larger overview. So, like I said, it's focused on our citywide resources, not so much the department-specific websites or social media. And I also want to make sure I acknowledge that all of the communication efforts in a lot of these projects, actually, all of these projects are the result of city staff all working together, and I've had a lot of help in all of these areas. So, I wanted to go over some of our existing resources, some of our statistics with those, just initiatives that we've had in the last couple of years, some potential future projects I'm looking at, a few challenges that I just feel are important to point out, and then just if you all have any questions. So, our bigger citywide communications tools are obviously our website. We started with Open Cities in 2019, and Granicus, which is a much larger company you might be familiar with, purchased Open Cities in 2021. So, we're under Granicus now. And of course, our web platform includes the Report a Concern tool, which is run through open forums, also part of this system. We have, we had 180 press releases last year. If you count the Mayor's Minute column, it's over 230. We're at 127 as of today, and we're kind of on track to be slightly more than what we did last year. Of course, there's some external websites. A lot of, you know, city facilities have those, some programs do as well. There's, we do some social media that are, that's separate from the main city account, and direct mail, hand-to-sanitation does a good bit of that, and those are more managed by departments. Connect Cheyenne, which we'll talk about in a second, is run by Public Input, which you might be familiar with. That was, it's a very common engagement platform, and we're working with them. We have a contract through September of 2027. And then our main social media accounts we use, what I would consider social media, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, LinkedIn, and Flickr, and we'll go into a little bit more detail about all of these in just a second. So, for the city website, in the last 12 months, we've had just under 200,000 active users, and that's what Google defines as unique visitors that interact with the site. So, I believe their definition is people who spend 10 seconds or longer on our website or visit two or more pages. So, people who actually interact with it versus those who just kind of, you know, see it and make, wait, that's not where I wanted to go, and leave and move on to something else. Pretty consistently, our most popular pages are job announcements, the sanitation division page, and the transfer station. Those are pretty consistent year over year. And then I just also wanted to point out, the last seven days, just, you know, because it does change a little bit here and there with what's going on in the community, job announcements are still the most important, but followed by building permits in light of the hailstorm, and then our press release for oversized vehicles. So, in the last seven days, those have been our top three specific pages. For Facebook, we're just under 18,000 followers. We've had over a million views since January 1st. I also want to say that Meta gives their definition of a view pretty loosely. So, if it just shows up in somebody's feed, even if they have no connection to the city, that counts as a view for our page. But we have had, you know, 346,000 views in the last 28 days, and we've reached 130,000 people. So, that's defined as individuals who have seen our content somewhere on that platform. The audience for this is about 65% female. 35 to 44 is our largest age group, followed by 45 to 54 is our second largest. So, it's not, you know, it's kind of that middle-of-the-road age category. Instagram, similar thing. You know, we've had about, we have 5,200 followers. The one interesting thing with this is the audience, our largest audiences for Instagram are almost identical to Facebook. So, the age categories, they vary by maybe a percentage point or two, but they're very similar to what our Facebook count is. Our other social media channels that we use frequently, we have YouTube, which mostly is used to host city videos and meeting recordings. That's been our primary focus with that. Our LinkedIn page, you know, helps people find us if they're looking for a job and can help recruiting efforts. And then Flickr was, we created in the fall of 2023, and right now, it's not, I would consider it social media, there's not as much of an interaction element with it. But the intent for it is to serve as a place for city photos that the public can view and interact with and use if they want. So, this is what our residents tell us. As we've been doing more surveys and data collection, we're able to kind of see some different trends and see if what were, or the areas that we're putting effort into line up with what the community wants. So, the next two slides, these questions are actually from one of the surveys we did for our rebranding project. And in this case, this question was, which social media platforms do you use the most? Facebook and Instagram were the top two by far. YouTube was in the third. And then for how people prefer to receive information from the city, you know, social media is the top, and then being emailed directly was the second way they prefer, or at least the respondents in this survey, preferred to receive information from the city. And we'll circle back to this a little later in the presentation. So, one of the ways that we've started to improve communication is we've been making use of the employee intranet. So, it's accessible to employees. It kind of serves as an online home for a lot of our policies, documents, templates, that sort of thing. And we've also started an employee newsletter with some help from city staff, and so that's going out monthly and just kind of helps employees stay connected with the organization. Externally, as I mentioned before, we've launched Connect Cheyenne this past spring. This is an engagement platform that is, it kind of allows for interactive and project-based engagement. One of the heaviest uses so far is Planning has been using it a good bit for their development reviews, so to solicit comments and feedback on different development projects. And then we've also had some other communications and engagement activities on there, too. Some of the advantages with this is we retain access to all the data and the content. So, it stays with us, we own it, and so we won't ever lose it versus if it was like consultant-driven project and then, you know, the project's over and we didn't have a good database for that. It can be a central location for engagement, which is one of the, what I think is one of the highlights. You know, if somebody is going to Connect Cheyenne to look for a specific project they want to interact with, they can also see all the other projects that are going on that they might be interested in or wouldn't have known about otherwise. There's a ton of tools with this. There's surveys, polls, question and answers. It has texting capability if people sign up for that. It can analyze comments that are on social media. We can set it up to where we could collect, we can collect input via voicemail. So, somebody can call a number, you know, who maybe wouldn't be as tech savvy and can speak into the voicemail recording, and then that'll convert it to text and count it as a comment. So, and there's project-based newsletters, too. So, we haven't used all these tools yet because this is relatively new, but there's a lot of opportunity with this platform. The one thing that is important to mention with this is we have paid for it for the first two years, I think through ARPA. For that third year, we will need to figure out how to pay for it. I think the cost of it is well worth it considering how much, you know, money's spent for individual projects, and if we can consolidate that, this actually ends up being more cost-effective than some of the other ways we do things now.
Matt, what is the cost for that subscription?
It's around 20,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
An example of investing in these tools and why some success stories with that is, you know, we, until we had Connect Cheyenne set up, we were using Survey Monkey and trying to push a little bit more digital interaction in addition to our in-person engagement. So, one example was the Johnson Pool design. You might remember the open house that CRI had last year. We also did an online survey with that that allowed 92 additional participants, and that means that their comments, if they couldn't make the open house, can now be incorporated into that potential design. Another success story, just to point out, is our community development block grant survey. So, typically HUD requires, I think, one or two public hearings in person as part of that grant cycle every year. And you may all know that typically we only get stakeholders, the people that are really involved within that program versus the public. This is the first year we actually did a survey with that, and we had 112 participants. And one of the cool things about it was that a lot of the, basically the point of the survey was to ask how people think we should spend that CDBG grant money, and the results kind of showed that the public that participated, they're once aligned with how we were proposing to spend that money anyway. So, it's kind of a good, just kind of a good thing there. We created an external website policy. So, over the years, there's been a few different projects that have had external policy or external websites as part of that work. We're trying to kind of limit those a little bit, in part to move things more to Connect Cheyenne. It will save money in the long term versus paying for all the web fees associated with keeping websites up and running, and it helps prevent the loss of some of those websites. One example is the West Edge Project, which was in the, I think, the early to mid 2010s. And that was a website that we paid to have created that we no longer have access to. So, you know, that's something that I hopefully will kind of improve those disjointed communications over time. We've done a little bit more work with public meetings and projects fairs. Of course, there's public meetings all the time for different city projects, but one of the things we started to try out last year was a general projects fair, and then also trying to see where we can add on additional projects to existing public meetings. So, our projects fair, I can't remember the month it was in 2024, but we had it out at the Beast facility. At the same time, there would be a lot of like, I think it was, I can't remember if it was basketball or volleyball, but there was some sports going on during the time we scheduled it with the kind of the intent of maybe we can pull some of those folks as they're coming and going. It didn't have great turnout, but it was worth trying just to see if that was something that people responded to. On the other hand, we'd have had a few different meetings where we've tagged on some other projects intentionally. One example was the public meeting for the MPO's Passenger Rail Site Selection Study, and I know the DDA tagged on with their plan of development. I believe Planning tagged on with some of their input they wanted to receive on multifamily housing. So, there were several other projects there, and that kind of helped boost turnout and public input for all of those different things. As we've talked about before, we're expecting new branding coming. We're on track to have it kind of in the third quarter of this year, probably the end of third quarter, maybe the start of the fourth is when we'll begin the rollout. We've just met with our consultants this week for their proposed implementation guide. So, kind of like a checklist of step-by-step processes of how we want to start to roll this out. Best practice kind of indicates a more phased approach, so where we start to replace the things that are low-cost first and then phase the rest of it in over time versus just trying to like, you know, just do everything all at once, and it's, you know, it's a little bit better from a financial perspective, too. So... As I think Amber mentioned during our budget session, we are hoping to kind of create a more comprehensive communication plan in the next year. I have one that I sort of drafted as sort of my own work plan that was last year, so this will kind of be an actual more formal one. But it'll outline strategies and initiatives that, you know, go with our citywide and our city council goals, kind of give us a roadmap and work plan for communications and engagement, you know, across the city with short, medium, and long-term goals. So, that should be coming, and just to help us kind of get that more formal process in place. I also want to look into creating an email newsletter because we have Connect Cheyenne that now allows us to do that. And, you know, going back to how people in our community prefer to receive information, direct email is a preferred method, and it also reaches people who aren't on social media. And so, we want to kind of look at that over the next year, mostly kind of aggregating the communications, press releases, that sort of thing that we put out already, but just in the spot that we can directly email folks who sign up for that. So, that's on the horizon as well. And then, you know, we talk about the website a good bit. The website could use some love, and so that's kind of what a priority I would like to make next, in the next year, is to even just go through reviewing our existing content, where things are at, how can we make it a little bit more streamlined and user-friendly, and then potentially explore some new vendors and just see if there's ones that might work better for the city that are a little bit more user-friendly from a content management perspective, too. So, nothing's been decided on that, but just something that I think might be good to just look into periodically. We've had our current vendor since 2019, and it might be good to just see what else is out there, but nothing, you know, it's just kind of depending on if we want to move in that direction. A few challenges just that I think are notable to go over. You know, our media environment's changed over the years, as many of you know. We still have the Tribune Eagle, our two TV stations and several radio stations, but there are fewer reporters and fewer media staff that are in Cheyenne, you know, compared to maybe a decade or so ago. So, that's just less resources they have to help, you know, cover the city, get our city information out, and it's just something to note. One thing I think that is important to do is just look at our communication staffing and budget. We do have fewer dedicated communications and engagement staff than what I would consider our peer communities, so like Loveland, Casper, Greeley, Rapid City. So, just, you know, just something to keep in mind. We don't have a separate communications and engagement budget right now. That might be something we want to look at in the future. If we were able to identify funding, the position I would suggest adding first would be a digital communication specialist, somebody who would work a lot more with the video and graphic element of the work that we do. And then, of course, just an ongoing challenge is just noise. There's a lot of different distractions for folks. You know, there's lots of different things capturing everybody's attention. So, you know, that's one of our challenges is how do we kind of break through that? And the other thing with social media, too, to keep in mind is if we post too much, if we post too much of the wrong thing, their algorithms can deprioritize our content or posts. So, there's some strategy we have to think about with that as well. But that's pretty much what I have. Like I said, I just wanted to give an overview, and if anyone has questions, I will try my best to answer.
Councilwoman Aldrich.
President, oh my gosh, President Rennie through you. So, I have several questions here. The Connect Cheyenne, you said was approximately $20,000 each year, and it came from ARPA funds for the first two years. I don't remember that ever coming through council. Was that just an administrative approval?
I think it's below the dollar level that's required to come through us.
Yeah, it's just interesting that sometimes we approve those, and then if we want to continue them, we're going to exceed that dollar amount. So, it sounds like at some point, which we then would, we're kind of committed once you get started down that route. I'm wondering about the modules through Granicus and, for instance, the open forums. Is that an additional cost to have that module?
No, Dr., or Councilman Rennie through you to Dr. Aldrich. No, it's included as part of our contract with Granicus. That's just how it was set up in 2019. Open forms is something that's added on to that. So, that's as far as I know.
I also am wondering about, is there a way or are we currently limiting all surveys to one response per email address so that we're not getting an individual who might be able to go in and answer the same survey multiple times?
Kind of like how you vote for best in Cheyenne.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you. Yeah, that's kind of my intention with the surveys that we've created, is that we try to limit that to at least one email address, or if we can limit it to one IP address at a time. You know, obviously, people could use multiple email addresses or multiple devices, but it's at least like, you know, some kind of safeguard that we have to hopefully prevent the same person from taking the same survey 10 or 20 times.
Through you, Dr. Rennie, I also am curious about the rebranding. I've heard, when you did your presentation, it was unclear to me whether that included rebranding of the, what, I'm guessing, I don't know if we're calling this the city seal, or if there's an actual city seal that would be included in that rebranding and what's involved in changing a city seal.
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you, and I appreciated you bring that up during that work session. So, the way we have it set up right now is there is an official city seal that I believe is the Capitol Building that dates back to, I think, the 1800s or so. That's, so then we have the bison, which is the city emblem as defined in city code. So, the intent is for both of those to be incorporated into the new brand. They'll still exist as those elements. And then the actual sort of graphic elements of the branding, like that city of Cheyenne I just showed, will kind of be what goes on like letterhead and, you know, communications and things like that. So, the city seal and the city emblem is intended to remain as is. And part of that is also for continuity, too. You know, it's still part of the city's overall branding, and it also helps us be more cost-effective, too, because then technically the bison emblem that we have now is still part of the brand. It's still a symbol of the city.
So, I guess I didn't understand that this is actually the new brand.
Dr. Rennie, it's part of it, correct?
It's, okay, it's through you, Dr. Rennie, it's part of it. So, is this, like, this is going to be on our letterhead? This is going to be, or is there a different, is there a graphic that goes with this? Is this, I mean, is this it? We paid how much for this?
Dr. Rennie through you. No, that's not just all. I just kind of wanted to give a sort of teaser of what they've been working on. So, we'll have a few different versions of that city of Cheyenne, some left-aligned, some with Wyoming, some with without that we can use. There's a color palette that goes with it. There are some patterns and textures that we can use, like in backgrounds and documents to kind of keep things consistent. They're going to provide us templates for like business cards, letterhead, all those different kinds of needs, PowerPoints. We're also getting kind of what they're calling a brand voice guide, which is, it'll kind of help us standardize how we communicate, like across departments. We'll have a style guide that's as part of that. We're getting our implementation plan, and trying to remember the other graphic elements. There's some other sort of graphic accents that'll go with that, too. So, it's not just that. It's kind of the whole comprehensive package, if that makes sense.
Okay. President Rennie through you. I'm also curious about, will our new branding include a Zoom background to be used during Zoom meetings by employees and council persons?
And Dr. Rennie through you, I don't think that that's something specifically outlined, but once we have all those files and those vector files, the logos, we can easily create something like that, and we can have that on the internet or on the shared drive for anybody to pull off.
Okay. I just have a couple more questions. Dr. Rennie, wondering through you about the ability to separate out surveys. I've been getting a lot of surveys lately from DDA. I've gotten surveys from the city, and it's very, very difficult to tell which are coming from DDA, which should be and is a separate entity from the city, and which are city surveys. So, are we going to be able to delineate that more easily for people in the community?
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you. That's really good feedback. If that's, and maybe that's like, you know, a style or branding element that we can put into if we emphasize more of what DDA surveys look like versus what city surveys look like, that could be something we can look into if that's kind of a point of confusion. Yeah, that's what I would say. We do have the, so as the DDA, when they were more integrated into the city, they do have access to Connect Cheyenne, and I think that that's probably still good to keep moving forward, but if there should be some more differentiation between what those two look like, we can definitely look into that.
Okay. And President Rennie through you, I'm just wondering who our current website vendor is and what is our annual fee?
Dr. Rennie through you. So, the website platform itself is called Open Cities, but that's now owned by Granicus. So, Granicus is the company that manages that contract. I have, I do have the contract in my email, but I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can send that to you.
I presume we'll get that in an email.
Yeah.
And President Rennie through you, is that connected to OpenGov at all?
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you, not that I'm aware of. I believe OpenGov is a separate, a separate service.
And lastly, I'm curious about the number of, you mentioned the number of public information officers for other communities. One of the things I've noticed in Cheyenne is that some of our departments have their own public information officers, and so I'm just wondering if the other communities have all of theirs in one unit or one department, and maybe they're not spread out amongst their different departments versus where we have ours spread out amongst different departments or agencies?
So, I have a question in regard to your question. Do we, I don't remember in the budgets seeing under different departments, somebody listed in that position per se, so I'm presuming it's just somebody within the department is serving that function?
Well, I think Alexis Farkas is separated.
Through the police department.
Yeah.
Good point. All right. Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, Dr. Rennie through you. So, our kind of full-time, what I would consider, communication staff is we have myself, we have Alex Farkas and PD, and then CRI has a few marketing folks that handle that Cheyenne presence on Civic Center arm, to the best of my knowledge. But even still, when you compare to some of those peer communities, like even Rapid City has a dedicated fire department, PIO. They have some other folks that are within their communications division. So, even when you count what we have, we're still below what our peer communities have, if that makes sense.
Okay. And just my last comment is that, through you, Dr. Rennie, is that recently I did request a list from you of, for instance, individuals to contact for a press conference, and that list was so outdated, it was almost not usable. And I noticed that in your list of entities, media outlets, one that probably has the largest circulation right now in the state of Wyoming, above and beyond the Tribune Eagle and the Casper Star, is Cowboy State Daily, and it's not even listed here.
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you. So, they are listed on our regional media list. I maintain two different ones. There's a local one that's just more Cheyenne-specific, and then there's a regional or statewide that covers outlets like Cowboy State Daily. Kind of use each one depending on what level of, kind of what level of reach we needed to get the word out about. And then as far as that existing communications list, yeah, there are definitely emails on it that bounce back from reporters who have since moved on, and we can certainly clean that up. There's not really a disadvantage to that because it's sent, the way it's sent through that media account, they just bounce back, and then we just add more people to it. So, it could be cleaned up, but it's not, it's not creating like a detrimental situation or anything like that, if that makes sense.
I, through you, Dr. Rennie, I've just found that in my day job, that it really is helpful to have a desk manual that's current and up to date for every person that works or every position, so that as people come and go, we don't lose that continuity. So, that might be really helpful to update that list for the next person that will follow you. Thank you.
Let's go to the other side. Councilwoman Emmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, with the Connect Cheyenne, who creates the content for that?
Dr. Rennie through you. So, Connect Cheyenne, the way it's set up is there are, we have a set number of administrative or project managers. So, I think we have 14 seats on there that we can add and remove as needed. So, it really depends on the project. I know Planning for those development reviews, they kind of administer that themselves. And I guess that's the overall answer, is that each project is kind of managed by the person that oversees it. So, Sophia has access to the DDA, the DDA projects, and then we can also give, one of the other advantages to it is we can give like outside consultants access to And then we can also give, one of the other advantages to it is we can give like outside consultants access to create and manage projects. So I believe there's a couple on there that, that are being managed by consultants. Now, we can go in and edit whatever we want. So if we want to double check their work or, you know, provide, if we want to like allow them to edit a project up to a point and then we have to actually approve it, we can do that. But that's, it's just, it's basically who's overseeing that project.
Thank you. And then I have one other question.
Okay, go ahead.
With your communications plan, since it appears to me that our number one recurring issue on council is communication, that people don't seem to think they, you know, get the information they need in the platform they need. And I don't know how you solve that. I've never been in an organization when that wasn't an issue. So I think we just have to keep plugging away at it. But I would assume in your communications plan, you'll include your strategy for what kind of populations and markets, markets you want to get to, which would then help drive your staffing and your content, your platforms, and then you'd use that to determine your budget?
Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, Dr. Rennie through you, I think that, that's definitely an important part of it. And even the more of the, the more surveys and engagement that we can do, the more data we can collect and see where we're missing those, or where we have those gaps. I mean, even just from our, our two biggest social media channels, you know, we know that we're, we're missing, you know, some, some different demographics in there. And those could be areas we need to focus on or explore or dedicate funding to, targeting those three different posts.
And then my last comment, no matter what we get, in my opinion, no matter what we get from the rebranding, we're going to think it costs too much and we didn't get what we should. It's just an expensive process with a lot of research on the background as far as brand standards, brand books, all of those things. So I would just like to bring that up, that it's going to seem like it's expensive for very little. But I think on the backend, there's a lot more there that we don't see. Thank you.
Councilman Escabel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Do we have any data on how our residents are receiving information through, through us, particularly 65 and over? Because when I look on the, that page for the city's website, it's only a little over 32, 33%. So I'm glad to see that you're going to refresh the website, make it a little more user friendly.
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you, so is, are you, Councilman Escabel, are you kind of asking how do we target like older adults in that category? Okay. So I think that, you know, there's any number of outlets. We do know that we have a high, I think we're, we're at 92% of households with a computer. We're in the 90s for people who are connected to the internet, according to census data. So that, you know, we, I don't know that we have as much of a gap with older adults necessarily as far as online content than maybe some other communities do. But there is certainly a gap there. And I think, you know, the more, it, it might be a little bit matter of the more engagement and, and data we can collect on what those folks or how those folks prefer to receive in, information, we can sort of target things in that way. But I don't have anything specific necessarily to say that, that, what that age group prefers. But that could be definitely something we can explore through like senior services or, or outlets like that.
That seems to be a comment that I'll, I'll get from a constituent when they're reaching out to us. And I try to guide them through the website for them to find whatever it is they're looking for. And they seem to still, you know, want to have the face to face or the phone call or even email. So that they're just not using the website as much as I'd like them to, to use it. But I guess we found that out with parking, they didn't even want to use an app. You know, we can only do what we can do. The only other question I really had was on Open Gov, the position that Michael Skinner has. Is he under contract or do you know for how much longer we'll have him?
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you, I'm, I'm not really involved with that project, so I'm not 100% sure. But I think Director Fountain might be able to provide that information. So I haven't been very involved with Open Gov.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the dais?
Yes.
Let me see if Councilman White has a question before I go back to you. Councilman White, do you have a question?
I do, thank, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Rennie through you. Matt, have you thought about or developed any type of plan to contact folks through TikTok? I don't TikTok at all, but I know that's kind of how the younger generation, it's, it's more popular with them than Facebook for sure and even Instagram. So I just didn't know if that was a avenue that you had been considering.
Mr. Murphy.
Uh, Dr. Rennie through you, so yeah, you're entirely right. TikTok is, is a major social media platform, especially for, for Gen Z and younger. The ongoing concern we have with that, that I, to my knowledge, hasn't quite been addressed, is that, that kind of security issue with the ownership of TikTok. I know there's still a lot of government agencies that don't want Tik, or don't allow TikTok to be on their phones. So until that gets resolved, I don't know that that's going to be something that we, that we kind of go into.
Anything else, Councilman?
Yeah, just one follow up, Dr. Rennie, Dr. Rennie through you, Matt. What, have you kind of thought up the details for kind of what you indicated you want your priority to be for the next year? And that's cleaning up the website? Because I know you, myself, Jennifer, and I can't, there might have been somebody else. We all took a deep dive into our website a couple of years ago and did what we could do to make it better. But yeah, our website's so antiquated, I, I just kind of wondered how you wanted to approach that. Because that, that's not going to be an easy feat.
Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, Dr. Rennie through you, yeah, I, I agree. I think it's definitely going to be a, a longer term thing that is probably going to be, you know, biting it off into chunks. There, there's a lot of different aspects to look at. I think, you know, if we, if we look at what pages are most popular and how we can make those easier to access. If we, there's definitely pages we need to go through and remove that are outdated or have been duplicated over the years. So there's, there's just a lot of things with that that I think are just going to have to break it, break it off into smaller pieces. If that answers your question.
Anything else, Councilman White?
No, Dr. Rennie, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Aldrich.
President Rennie through you, I had two questions that I had after I looked back through my notes. The first is, it says that the internet, were you starting to use that? Is that an additional cost through Open Cities?
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you, I am, I'm not 100% sure, but we have had it since we had the contract with Open Cities. So that was part of that initial package that, that was created in 2019. And it was, it just was being underused. So we're just taking advantage of what we already had, essentially.
Through you, Dr. Rennie, I know that I have used and we use through a variety of different things, things like Slack and Assembly. And I'm just wondering if it's those who are more cost effective or if there's a cost with this internet system. My other question was on the council meeting views. I know that I've looked at that a lot of times the day after a council meeting or a committee meeting. And especially after council meetings, that it seems like we have a spike. Obviously, it's just come out. But do you know what about our average viewership is of council meetings and committee meetings?
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie, I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I could go back and look at our, our YouTube, our YouTube views and kind of see what that looks like. The one, and we can look at the, how, when it's streamed to Facebook too. The one thing I would note with that is Facebook in the last year has changed their policy to those live streams where they delete it periodically. I think I've, I want to say the period's three months, but I can't remember off the top of my head. So we don't have those older live streams on Facebook anymore. They're all, they would all just be on YouTube, but we could at least look at what we had recently and kind of get some, see if there's any trends there.
Through you, Dr. Rennie, I just think we should note that the last I heard, the largest new user age group on Facebook is 60 plus. So I think that there are still people signing up for that in order to keep track of their kids and grandkids, so.
All right, Councilwoman, Mr. Moody, you haven't been able to ask a question yet.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, through you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Just one question about the Facebooking out information. I've noticed that some of the city council meetings are posted the day of, including the agenda. Could you look into maybe posting on Thursday, the agenda, not just the city council meeting, but the Zoom information, also the, possibly even for finance and public services committee, just because a lot of people like testify via Zoom?
Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, Dr. Rennie through you, we can definitely look into that. Typically, sometimes it's not always on Sundays, but typically I schedule that for Sunday. So we could always do it earlier as soon as the agenda's ready. That's, there's no problem with that.
All right, follow up, Mr. President?
Go right ahead.
For the, for the next one, I saw the survey at the Facebook. How many people participated in that survey?
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie, which, which survey?
It was, uh, grab this real quick.
Oh, Dr. Rennie through you, are you, Councilman Moody, are you referencing the graph that's in the chart? Oh, so that was, that was part of the, one of the rebranding surveys we did. And it had about 800 responses total for that whole survey. But I think on here, because not everybody answered every question. So I think on here, it's probably small on the printout. But I think for the, for the social media question, which platforms, we had 759 responses to that. And we had the same number for the second question too.
Thank you. And just one more follow up.
Of course.
For the YouTube page, I've had some constituents reach out saying that it's kind of confusing, like which is public service, which is finance, which is city council. Have you thought about making like a list saying this is finance committee 2025, city council meetings 2025? Similar to what the legislature does, is they really organize it by year? If it's a, you know, corporations committee, judicial committee, et cetera? Just so if people want to go back and play it, say, from a year ago.
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you, that's something we could definitely look into. Because I think right now it's just sort of chronological with those recordings and it just says finance, public service. But that's, we could organize by list pretty easily.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Emmons.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick question. Is the website part of the rebranding or not?
Dr. Rennie through you, so in terms of, you know, whether we hired someone to actually go in and make changes to the website, no. But the, the rebranding that we will get will affect the colors and the logo and how that's placed. So we'll just, I'll probably end up doing that on my end, but yes.
Any other questions? Councilman Laborn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Matt, you're under the city clerk's office now, correct?
I think.
Uh, Dr. Rennie, no, I'm, I'm under the mayor's office.
Under the mayor's office, I see. So you believe that it would be best to have your own department?
Mr. Murphy.
Dr. Rennie through you, I, I think we, that there's a number of different setups for that. Sometimes it's, and, and cities have it set up all different ways. Sometimes it is its own department, sometimes it's a division under a larger department. Often, whatever the administration looks like for a city, whether that's a mayor, city manager. I, I don't know that we would need to have a full department at this point, but at least if we had, you know, another staff member or two that could help us get, do more than we do now.
Well, thank you. This is very interesting. I, good to catch up on this. I'm not really a techie. I'm, I'm sort of a technophobe actually, but it's interesting to know because certainly over the years, we had much more interaction in person. People just don't come to the meeting anymore. But I think no one can say that we don't reach out and offer multiple opportunities for that transparency and that we're working for more. I'm awfully glad that we could utilize that Rescue Act money this way. I don't know if we've been able to find that and put it together on our own budget. But I know that Open Gov is going to make a big difference for us. So I certainly appreciate what you're doing and that transparency leads to the individuals in our community to seek that accountability. You got to have that knowledge to really interact well. And this is very impressive. Thank you very much.
I have a couple, guess the thoughts, questions. I agree with Councilman Moody that I would like to see us put notices out more than 24 hours in, in advance if possible. I just think that would be beneficial if we could do that. And from a philosophical standpoint, Mr. Murphy, how do we? It seems, I mean, from when I first got on council back in, I don't know, I guess they still, they, they had developed printing presses then. I mean, our, our media has become much more fragmented. So, and there are times where I wish we would do, and, and maybe I'm just not getting it because the media is so fragmented. I'm, sometimes I wonder, well, how would someone reach me? Because I only listen to a couple of radio stations. Since the paper quit delivering, I don't read it as frequently as I once did. Our TV station I catch occasionally. So if most of the public's like me, it's like, how do you get to those people? But there are some stories, like coming up in, in a couple of weeks about, you know, now you have to get your oversized vehicles off the street. Stories like our stormwater utility that's going to come into effect in January. It's like, I, I guess I would see, like to see us maybe, and I don't know if you have to spoon feed the media and we have to develop those stories, but I would like to see us take a more proactive approach to those things, to try and educate the public as to why we think it was important. Because I, you know, I know they were able to watch the council meeting and they could watch, could have watched our work session on that. But I don't know, we had that many views. So I guess, sorry, this is kind of a long question, but when you have it, when we have important issues like that, big issues that we're going to get, we are going to get feedback on, how do we, with today's media environment, how do we disseminate that effectively?
Dr. Rennie, I, I think that's a, that's a really difficult question. And it hits a couple of those challenges that I talked about, both the media one, of course, and then also just kind of the noise and how do we break through that? I, I think that, you know, the media that we do have still does a really good job with the resources they have. But it's, like you said, it's not as robust as it was 10 years ago or so. I think some of the, some of the efforts that we're working on, like Connect Cheyenne, because if we can just remind people you can keep going to the same place, both with Connect Cheyenne and then like the news tab on the city website where we have all those press releases, those are helpful if we can just, you know, get, help people understand that those are two places they can go consistently to find information. But we're probably just going to have to do, you know, more than we have and just push things out a second and a third time. And at least with the outlets that we do, that we have currently. So I think I, yeah, one of the other things I hope is if we get this e-newsletter started, because that's no additional cost to us. That can be a way people can get right into people's inboxes. So yeah, there's, I don't have a, a good answer, so.
I know, it's, it's difficult and I don't know. I mean, I've thought of that at times, like, how do we disseminate that? Because people say, well, I didn't know you were doing that. And I say, well, you know, it's out there. But I, I think with the cutbacks in, in media staff in town, that's just seems to be pervasive in the industry. Unfortunately, maybe we, maybe we do need to think about adding another individual, because I think we almost need to do those stories for them and just spoon feed it to them if we have to. So anyway, I look forward to, I know you said that your media plan would be done sometime next, late in the year. So I look forward to seeing what suggestions you have. All right, any other questions? Councilman White. Okay, everybody, thank you for attending. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for always responding to our press releases.
I can meet Wednesday at 3:30 works.